Twenty-one planning board meeting, as we always do, is we could press, please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Invisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first we'll move on to correspondence, which I assume we have a few. I saw a letter here from the, uh, trouble international school, they wanted to be included. I don't know if this, oh, there's David now.
Um.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to see you all.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Jerry Schwab is here too.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
So I don't know if there's too much to talk about right now, John. We did have a site walk. Uh, members of the board were up there. Um, I have to say, just my opinion, just one member, I was very impressed with the, uh, the, uh, the work they had done up there and also the proposed changes, sound, looked like it made sense and, uh, I don't know, past that, John, is there anything we need to do at this point? You're on mute.
If any other members have any other comments, uh, we can create a memo to go out to the applicant with some of your observations and comments, if you'd like, I don't know if there's any other comments, but we could do that.
I thought the site looked great, I agree with, um, Rich on that, for sure, they did a great job, and the future plans are welcoming.
Yeah, I have to agree, they did, they did a wonderful job and their, their plans are great, it's, it's a big asset to us, it really is.
Thank you.
I, I, you know, it's also, I think, important to note what they're doing up there, it's so very important. As, as, um, Bill had said, it's, you know, really is, I think, very unique to the area and I think it's really important work and, you know, you, you just, when you went up there, it was really, you're really on top of the world up there. And it was, uh, it was very pleasant, I thought it was, everything looked in great order and the, all the changes seemed to make sense.
It's a really nice location for a school like this, just like we told you when we went through the initial review.
You know, it, it was interesting when you guys brought up, you know, that there were other developers looking at the area, but the cost of demolition was so extensive, is it kinda, it didn't make sense for people to go up there and do anything and, and, uh, I know, Mr. Coughler and his group came up and just really seemed to, uh, you know, once you step back and look at it, I think is, as, uh, Mr. Schwab said, you know, after you buy a house and that first or two years, I think I'm gonna change this a little bit, maybe tweak this, it just, it really made sense.
Yeah.
So past that, John, I think if you wanna get a memo to that, and then we'll move on from there.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, uh, appreciated the, the site walk and it was great though, I had great weather too, to see everything that was out there. And again, our, our feeling was just, you know, as we go into this, there's a lot of work to do and they, you know, they're doing this incrementally as they go forward, as, as the demand is, is needed, right? So we just wanna make sure that we're in the right path and, you know, kinda guided by your, your instincts as well, so we appreciate that.
Well, I, I think they put a real good team together and it really seems to, everything they're doing so far and you guys have shown really makes perfect sense.
Great.
All right, so we'll, we'll put together a memo and we'll add some, uh, next steps and we'll also add in some of the, um, you know, pertinent comments that were discussed at the meeting prior, just so everything's memorialized.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
John, before, before we sign off on this, did, did we decide that there is or is not going to be a public information session on this?
I don't think that was resolved.
What's the feeling of the board?
I don't, I don't think you need a public, uh, information, uh, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. We could work this out, you know, with ourselves.
It, it is, in essence, it is an active application because it was a phased approval. So I would suggest that you're past the need for public informational as it's probably somewhat fresh, relatively speaking, uh, in the neighbors and public's mind that this project is out there and is being developed into its end, end situation, so.
That's great.
That would be my suggestion, so.
We would appreciate that, we thought that was the case, we had, we had made that comment here last month and I knew you wanted to think it through after the site walk. So I think Jerry and I and certainly Mr. Coughler would like, would like to continue and, and advance without that.
Anybody else?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I'd agree, move right to a public hearing?
To not.
Why would, no, no need for the public informational hearing, but does it still have to go to a public hearing or no?
Yeah, I believe it needs to go to a public hearing because it's going to be fairly significant amendment.
In light of Rob's comment, are you all able to just proceed to, to the public hearing? Rich, you're muted.
Oh, I don't know how that happened. Um, I think you're gonna have to work with, um, Robin to get that set up.
Okay.
Well, you're not, are you calling for a public hearing now, or are we continuing to review some of the developing?
No, I think you gotta start to review, right, we gotta get into the, dig into the details.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Very well.
Okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Coughler, keep up that good work and that great service up there.
Do our best, thank you guys for helping us get there.
All the best.
Thank you.
See you later on the agenda, unless you wanna take the last item right now.
Were you last?
I'm just kidding, I'm not trying to cut, there are too many, I have too many friends on the screen who I would be cutting.
Oh. We'll see you later, David.
All right.
Care.
Okay, what else do we have in correspondence? All right, then we're gonna move on to the draft minutes. Everybody had a chance to review? These are the meeting minutes of March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Uh, I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
I got it.
We got a first by Bach, second by La Scala, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move into the regular session portion of our meeting. First, on the agenda, we have the Albert French subdivision, this is a public hearing, location is one-seven-six-two French Hill Road. Do we have a, uh, motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
First by La Scala, second by Bach, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're on, Joe.
Hello, everyone, uh, good evening, Joseph Rina, the Principal Site Design Consultants, this evening representing Mr. Albert French, uh, in regards to a minor subdivision at seventeen-sixty-two French Hill Road. Robin, may I share my screen?
Yes.
Um, do you guys see the, uh, aerial photo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, French Hill Road is, um, off of Underhill Avenue, it's, it's, uh, two roads west of the intersection of Underhill and Salmo River Road. And the, the property in question is the first property on the right as you come up French Hill Road. Um, it's a, it's a two-point-one acre piece and it's zoned R-one-forty. Uh, so there, there is twice the amount of area required to meet the, uh, the area for a single lot. So the property has three, three residences on the property which, uh, pre-exist. Uh, there is a three-bedroom residence, a one-bedroom residence, and a two-bedroom residence. The one and two-bedroom residents are accessed off of one driveway, which is right here. And the other residence is, um, uh, off of a single driveway, its own driveway, which is right here. So this property was subject of a, of a subdivision in the ear, in the early eighties, uh, where these two parcels were subdivided off one large parcel. And at that time, the residences, the three residents were in existence and it was recognized by the zoning board and the planning board at that time, um, that this parcel would be able to come in for a subdivision and basically, um, making it into two lots, uh, where one lot would be, um, one lot would be a, uh, would contain the three-bedroom residence and the other two, uh, residences would be on their own lot. So, in essence, uh, making it more of a legal setup. So this would be the proposed dividing line right here, it's, it's odd in shape, but, um, it works so that the, uh, existing structures on the property will meet the setbacks and yet maintain the required minimum lot area. The, um, each, uh, structure has its own septic system. However, the health department has required us to prove out that there will be, that there is a, uh, future area for septic, which are, which are these areas right here, uh, in, in the event that they are needed. So, uh, once we have, uh, approval from the planning board, we can then move uh, with that resolution over to the health department and have them, uh, finalize it and sign them out. They have already been out and we've done all the testing with them, uh, and that's all been approved. So, you know, there is no new structures being proposed, the site is gonna remain as is, we're just adding that dividing line, basically, uh, to create it to one. Um, that's it for my presentation, I'll, uh, take any questions if you have any questions.
Hey, thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Anybody from the board have any questions on the matter?
None here.
I have one.
Fire away, John.
Joe, the, the driveway that's cutting across the, the top, what is the top, in this drawing, the top piece of the, yeah, that there?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason that you can't, it appears as though the lot was created in such a way to have its frontage to get a driveway onto French Hill? Is, what's the reason that you can't make that happen?
Um, as you know, that exists that way, John, and it was.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Yeah, it was approved that way as part of the subdivision, my guess would be that, looking at the, at the grades in this corner, that would probably, in my mind, be the first thing that jumps out at me as an issue. Uh, trying to come down this grade or even come down this grade here, I think would be, um, uh, we, we would not be able to meet the, the driveway slope requirements for the town, which is, as you know, three percent for the first thirty feet, which is essentially a foot drop and then ten percent maximum.
Okay, could you do that analysis so the board has in their pocket what that, you know, what those?
Yeah, yeah, we could profile that.
Ramifications are?
Yeah. We could profile that.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board? Jim, you got anything?
Uh, nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll reach out to the public. If anybody's got a question, you could raise your hand on your screen and Robin will, will signal for you. Give you a minute. See anyone, Robin?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, this has been in front of us for a while, so I think probably any questions we had were answered. John, uh, outside of what you asked, does that hold us up for moving forward? Or could that be worked out?
I mean, I, there, there is, you know, there is that access easement, which I assume was, you know, put in for that reason. Um, so, so the board is covered from that aspect, but we, we, we could provide that as backup information for the, for the, uh, for the board.
And, and could, could you zoom out, uh, Joe?
Yeah.
Joe, does, does that easement exist already? Was that part of the prior subdivision?
Yes, that exists already.
But it, there's a recorded easement in favor of these other parties?
Yes.
So, so we probably couldn't change it anyway?
No.
Well, you, you could change it where? For which party?
Well, there's an easement for the, the lots that came out of the prior French subdivision. Uh, my, my question is basically, that the easement that came out of the prior French subdivision, did that create that easement? In which case, um, those people, I assume, are not a party to this application and may not be willing to alter their access.
No, I, I think it's in common ownership, isn't it, Joe?
Uh, one of the parcels, it, yes, is, is in common ownership.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing that I wanna touch on, so you have this, this funny line here, and that's to, to manage the zoning setback requirements?
Yeah, correct.
Can you just go through that again?
Yeah, so basically, you, to try, to try to make as conforming as possible, we have, and, and, uh, not have to go back to this, to the zoning board for additional variances. Um, this basically goes around these parcel, these, these structures in a way where it maintains the minimum setbacks. So, um, although it may look odd, in order to get the area and, and maintain those setbacks, this works the best, you know, of course, when you're out there and you're, you're, you're on the site, it's, it's almost a natural location for the property line, um, because this basically rides the change in grade here, through here, so it's, so if you were in this residence up here, um, you, you, your backyard is, is, is this area here, so you, it feels like it's already separated. And this is also a, a wooded area, um, coming in through here, there, there, uh, natural, natural vegetation through here, so it, it creates, also gives that feeling that you're on a separate lot. So I don't, um, I think that's the best explanation I could give as to why we've, you know, we've made that work that way.
Okay, so that little bump that you were at just a minute ago, that is what, what prompted that bump?
The, the cottage right here.
Okay, so, so you, to get a, uh, side yard or?
Cor- correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I, I just don't see the, the dimension there.
Um, yeah, the, we do not have that dimension, but, um.
Okay, so you'll put that on?
I mean, that's, that's, that's why we, we've done it that way.
All right, so you'll be able to put that dimension on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you're, uh, one of the reasons I'm bringing it up is for that reason, and also, you know, there is a thing in the zoning code about doing your best to not create irregularly shaped lots, so.
Right.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Anybody else from the board? All right, that being said, we have a motion to then close the public hearing. So moved?
Second.
Do we wanna leave it open for ten days for a, a written period, or is that not necessary at this point? Okay, so we have a motion from La Scala, a second by Garrigan, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set, Joe.
Okay, so regarding, I, I know there's a draft resolution in front of you, um.
Yep, there is, and there's a neck deck, but I think, whenever, do we wanna get John's items cleaned up before we deal with that?
Okay.
Whether we wanna move forward.
That's up to the board, uh, I just, at this point, I can't go to the health department until, you know, we, we, um, signed off on that, but, but we can get this off, we can get you this, uh, back for the next meeting, I guess. Um.
Board members are right with that, or you wanna move forward?
John, what's the impact of the questions you raised on our moving forward tonight?
Well, I think in terms of the driveway, I think that, um, it's a less desire, although the easement does exist there, little bit of a less desirable condition to have the driveway going across, uh, and I think you are able to discount that if you have in your record, the detail on the slope and that it's less safe and is more difficult or impossible to comply with the code in that regard. So I think that's the reason for that, that, that was the reasoning for my question. I didn't expect that, um, necessarily the driveway would be immediately moved over, uh, on its own property, so. But I think that in your record to, um, have that you did a full review on it to make sure that it's as code compliant as, as you can and have as least, the least amount of encumbrances on any lots that you are creating. That's why I brought it up. Uh, in regard to the lot line, uh, I knew the answer to the question, I think we should have that one dimension on there or whatever dimensions we need to make sure we understand what's going on here. That, that's not a big deal, I know Joe could do that very, very quickly, but there is a, uh, something in the zoning code that discourages the creation of irregularly shaped lots, this is one of them, so it just needs to be, uh, considered.
And, and those conditions, they're not stated in the drafts that we have tonight, am I right? They're not referenced?
I don't think so.
All right, I, I would suggest we hold off until they are addressed, we can put them in the paperwork, we'll have a complete record on this.
This makes it cleaner. All right.
So, so if I, would you be, would you be able to, um, open, uh, if, you know, that would be, you know, work session, would you be able to open that up for, uh, for approval of a resolution at that time?
I don't think that'd be a problem, it'd be quick.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, don't go far. Okay, next, we have another public hearing, this is on the Carrera site plan, location two-five-zero East Main Street. So there's a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
First by Bach, second by La Scala, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, you're on, Joe.
Okay, uh, good evening again, Joseph Rina, the Principal Site Design Consultants, representing Carrera Enterprises. Um, the Carreras have a, uh, eight-acre parcel, uh, which is located on East Main Street in Jefferson Valley at the intersection of May Park Street and East Main Street. Um, this is the parcel here. Um, the, the parcel is, uh, currently zoned, uh, country commercial and R-one-eighty. The, uh, and, uh, you'll see on, on the later map that I'll show you, but there, roughly through here somewhere is this change in zone where the back part of the property is R-one-eighty. Currently on the site, the, uh, Carreras have, uh, commercial buildings, uh, which, uh, in the front building, they have tenants which they lease out, and in the rear building, they have their offices as well as, uh, as you could see, some onsite storage, there's existing parking, uh, on the site. Um, so as I said, this is the zone line between the two, uh, CC zone and the R-one-eighty zone, which is the rear part of the, rear part of the property. So in, in the country commercial zone, they are permitted to have, uh, you know, commercial and residential uses in there. Uh, the proposal is to construct two freestanding storage buildings, um, that, uh, generally, they're gonna be about, you know, one and a half story high, which you would need for a commercial building to store, um, uh, equipment or have other bulk storage, which is going to be used by the, the property owner and, um, also available to, uh, the tenants on the property. So the, the proposal is to, um, commit off the main driveway here with a new driveway, which will service these two buildings here. The, um, uh, at this point, we're, we're expecting three garage bay doors, uh, in the front of the building. There'll be a, a, an area here that'll be also part of the asphalt pavement for the driveway, which will act as a, as a turnaround. Um, the, uh, buildings will have no plumbing facilities, uh, they, they will have electricity brought to them though, but they'll have no plumbing facility, so they, they will not be utilized for anything else but storage. So to construct the building, we're, we're going to be cutting into this slope here. Um, in, in discussions with the owner, we're going to redesign this so that we can reduce the amount of, um, cutting in the slope by taking the back foundation walls and bringing them all the way up. Um, that'll, that will allow us to, uh, bring the grade up in the back. In addition, they are willing to, to build some retaining walls here to reduce the amount of cut that's gonna occur. Um, so not only is that gonna reduce the amount of impact on the slope by cutting, but it's also gonna reduce the amount of trees that are, that are, um, going to be removed. At this point, uh, the way the plan sits now, there's fifty-one trees that are going to be removed. Uh, we plan to mitigate that by planting some new trees and, uh, planting this slope, which Frank Juliano, landscape architect, will explain, uh, shortly, and, um, there, there is no other air, area really on the site to do any additional planting because, um, this, this front part of the site here is gonna remain in its current condition, which is, uh, wo- wooded, as well as the, the remainder of the site, this back area of the site, it's all gonna, gonna be remain wooded. There really isn't a lot of opportunity to plant new trees, so we'll be doing some new tree plantings, uh, um, some restoration of the slope, which will include trees in the long term. Um, and, uh, that, it's up for further discussion with the, with the board if they feel that's adequate or not, or whether we need to do anything in addition. For our stormwater, we've, uh, got two infiltration systems, one here and one here. Uh, we've already done the testing with that, with the engineering department, under the previous engineer, uh, town engineer, and that's all squared away as, as far as we're concerned. Uh, we prepared a SWIP and submitted that SWIP. Uh, now, Dancy, RC and I have discussed some modifications that, uh, we would like to see made, with the drainage, which, uh, we have no issue with, so we're gonna be making those modifications also. So at this point, I'm gonna ask Frank Juliano to just go over the, uh, landscape. Frank?
Yep, I'm here.
You're on, okay.
I should pop up any minute there. There we go.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, this is Frank Juliano. The, um, plan that you're seeing on the screen right now, we did already present to the Conservation Board and to Avoca. Um, there was only one comment from Avoca regarding, uh, changing the species of one of the maples from, uh, the swamp red maple to a sugar maple, which we have no problem with. The concept of ju- the drawing, uh, on the, uh, you'll see the screening on the right side of the, uh, screen. That's basically to, uh, screen the adjoining property. The, uh, property is already screened by topography. There's a ridge going through there. So, uh, there's topography that screens the adjacent property and we're mitigating additionally with additional evergreen and deciduous screening. Everything used on this, uh, plan is native. The, uh, slope is mitigated, the steepness of the slope and the erosion control is, uh, a process that has been used for the past few years, uh, by New York State along steep slopes on highways and is being utilized right now, uh, by Westchester County along the Bronx River Parkway. Uh, in the plant list, it's noted as the northeast mix. It was developed by Cornell. It's a mix of native grasses for quick stabilization of the slope. But what's unique to this mix is that it also is a seed blend that gets custom blended, uh, uh, with tree and shrub seeds. So that what we do is we gave, um, the, um, seed producers the species of trees and shrubs that are already growing in the adjacent woodland, and they customize this seed mix to, um, imitate, uh, the, uh, adjacent, um, vegetation. So in this case, there'd be oak, hickory, some maple and birch, uh, seeds mixed in as well as some, uh, there's some native, uh, ilex growing through there. There's no invasive species on this slope for, for some reason. It's, it's a pretty clean site. So that seed mix, which you see hatched, is a custom seed mix serving two purposes. One is, uh, the native grass that will stabilize the slope quickly. And then over the next, uh, few years, the native trees and shrub seeds will germinate and, uh, the, basically reforest the site. Yeah, I've watched it over the past few years along the Bronx River and also along the Taconic up towards, in Duchess County, where the state and counties have used it. And in two years, there's already two to three foot, uh, maple and oak trees growing through, uh, the seed mix. So that's what we're proposing here to, uh, so eventually that slope will look just like the rest of the woodland. As Joe mentioned, regarding a mitigation with, with additional trees, we're using as many as we could where there's areas that have room for trees. The, uh, rest of the site, uh, is pretty heavily wooded, so we wouldn't, wouldn't make any sense to, uh, try to incorporate trees in the woodland that's already existing in the healthy woodland. Uh, so that's about it for this. If there's any questions?
Can you point out the areas that you say are heavily wooded?
Uh, Joe, just outline them. Joe, could you do that again?
Sure. So essentially, um, right, right, so for, right now, let's say this line here represents the, the wood line. So everything beyond this, everything to this side is, is currently wooded. Um, so our limit of, of disturbance is pretty clear as to what it is. You can see basically what our limited disturbance is, and it comes up here and then it goes down along here. So essentially this, this portion here, this portion here, and the remainder of the back of the site, go wrapping around to here is going to remain in, you know, in, in its, uh, natural condition.
The stormwater areas, they will be disturbed areas in that.
Right.
Right, okay, and you have another one up on the more north easterly.
Right, which is right here.
Those are connected, right?
Yes.
So you'll need to take some trees down through that corridor that you create?
Um, true, John, we will, we will have to do that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that all, that will, we will get to that in terms of detail and
Yeah.
number of trees and so forth, okay?
Right, right.
Anything else? Uh, just real quickly on that, related to how mature are those trees? Is it an older woodland, or is it, you know?
Yes. You mean the steep vegetation on the site?
Yeah.
The, the, it is a very established, uh, some of the trees must go back, uh, thirty, eh, I don't think this area up on this, on this slope there was ever really farmed. Uh, so it wasn't, um, newly vegetated over the past twenty years. There's some nice established trees, especially in the upper, uh, upper triangle there. Uh, I mentioned at the Avoca meeting that of three properties north of this, uh, I had owned a property there and that same woodland in the back goes up towards Wood Street, uh, which is pretty established and, uh, yeah, there's no, um, invasive species. They're established trees. I would say the average is between twelve and twenty-four inch caliper up on that slope.
Do we have any idea of the total trees coming down, Frank?
Uh, Joe has that number.
Fifty, fifty-one trees at this point, par- uh, prior to us making adjustments in the grading behind the building.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Uh, he, if you have, uh, a sense of we are tree mitigation, do you have this, anything that you're anticipating with that?
Uh, it, it, you know, again, we're, we're open for discussion on that. I mean, as I said, I think there's limited area for us to, um, do any of that. We're, we're planting twenty-four trees on the site. And as I said, uh, you know, as Frank explained, eventually this will, uh, reforest itself once this, once this seed mix takes hold and, and over time. So, you know, how to quantify that? I don't know how to quantify that. I don't know if Frank were to take a guess at that based on, um, uh, you know, how mu- you know, how each tree will overtake another tree to gain, you know, to gain the, the, the area, but uh, other than that, I don't, I don't know how to quantify what we're doing here. Any, anything that, that we need to make up? I think the only, you know, other option would be to do something offsite or, um, to contribute to the tree fund.
The, uh, one of the problems here is when you, uh, try to establish any kind of, um, tree, even if it was a one and a half to two inch caliper tree, uh, on a slope, a newly created slope, uh, the, the viability of, of that vegetation really decreases dramatically. Um, i- i- on, on a slope like created in the back of these buildings. So to just keep adding trees to this disturbed area may, uh, isn't, the long run isn't going to be, uh, the optimum solution. We might be able to, uh, find some areas along the edges of the existing woodland, um, to the south that we could, uh, revegetate, um, and I guess we can study that along this, uh, the, uh, existing drive, along the edges of the woodland.
Any opportunity to do, uh, understory shrubbery in the wooded areas that you expect to not disturb in order to en- enhance the forest?
Uh, I would say yes. If we could work the, uh, understory, not only would the understory work, um, along the edges that we disturb, but it would also work in the, uh, areas when, uh, Joe, can you go back to your drainage plan? Where you show the, uh, coltech system? There'll be a slight corridor created where those two, um, coltech systems, your drainage systems are, uh, connected. Uh, along that pipe, uh, will create kind of a, an edge in the woodland, in the woodland there. We can do some understory tree, uh, like the native dogwoods, Amalanki's birches, as well as some shrubbery there and reforestate along that edge. It's not going to be a very wide edge, but yes, there is possibilities of doing that that we can look at and keep the vegetation on site. John, is that what you were asking basically?
Basically, yes. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Which I know, um, previously we had addressed, I think, some comments from the fire marshal. Or is there anything developed on that end, or is there anything that we need to discuss at this point in time about fire access, uh, fire apparatus access or anything? I don't know if there was anything left open from, uh?
Yeah, uh, honestly, I'm not, uh, I'm not sure where that stood, what they did.
We'll reengage with them, uh, you know, as we get to this more final plan. But I think there is, you know, just to make sure that they're comfortable with what access they have here now, because they don't have too much access to, uh, you know, other sides of the building, so I think we should be clear that they are comfortable with how they can, uh, serve the site in terms of emergencies.
Dan, you got anything to add?
Yeah, so this was the, this was the, uh, um, Fire Commissioner's memo. Um, they want fire sprinklers required for the new buildings. So I take back my previous comment that we're not going to be bringing water back there. We will be bringing water back there, I guess, for fire sprinklers. Unless we can come up with, uh, uh, something that's, uh, needs a fire rating. Um, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to reengage him on this, like you said, John. I know I had a discussion with, uh, with Kalisha on this back when, and, and frankly, um, I don't know if it was ever resolved.
Dan, you want to add anything?
Um, I guess there were, there were two issues that I talked to Joe about, and I just wanted to, to mention it, so we just get into the record. Um, the one thing is the, there's like a drainage swale, uh, behind the, the, the area that's being, uh, disturbed, um, which is intended to convey basically the clean water around the stormwater management. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that down at the bottom, when that water reaches the, um, you know, the existing driveway, that we have a way to, uh, uh, get it into the, um, the drainage system. So we're talking about maybe putting, uh, uh, just a piece of pipe with an end section on it to collect that water. And, and the other thing I asked was that we, uh, put the, show the location of the septic system for the existing structure on the building. And then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be doing a, a deep dive into the SWIP that was prepared to make sure, uh, everything on that is compliant. And Joe, I assume that that was done on the, the, the disturbance that was on this plan, so.
Yeah.
You know, I guess it, I mean, I guess you could revisit it, but it seems like we'll probably, uh, could argue there'd be a little bit less runoff if we can limit it, how much of the, the site is being, uh, converted from woods to, uh, to, uh, to a slope behind the buildings.
Yes, in agreement.
Thank you, Dan.
So we got.
Jim, anything from your end?
Nothing from my end, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Robin, we'll reach out to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions, concerns? With the, uh, application? We'll give you a minute.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, so other than what we mentioned tonight, I recommend we leave this open for a ten day written period. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I make a motion.
Let's see, a motion by Roxanne and a second by Bill. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion from the board for leave the regular session and move into the work session.
No motion.
A motion by Aaron Bach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Move into the work session. First we have on the agenda is Aspen and Mill Street subdivision. This is a discussion of a private road maintenance agreement. Uh, location is varied on Mill Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Sir, all right, Aaron's out. Do we have the applicant on?
Yes, Alan Rothman from Aspen Mill Street Properties.
How are you, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Good. You're on.
Okay, so, um, a few years ago, um, I took one lot and divided it into four lots. Um, on that lot was, um, a multifamily and a single family house and, uh, vacant land. And so we ended up with four, went, went from one lot to four lots. And there's two, um, single, um, vacant lots, um, now, um, a multifamily and, um, a, a single family house. Um, there's a private road that services the two structures currently on there, on the property. And the, we will add, um, one, um, that will, we have, um, the approval to build two single family houses. One is on Aspen Road and will not be part of the maintenance agreement, and the other lot is on, um, is on this, on this private road, so there'll be three properties on this private road. Um, a vacant lot that will be a single family house, a multifamily, and another single family house that already exists. Um, the, um, so I wrote, uh, um, a, a maintenance agreement, and now is the time for, um, any, um, any response to my maintenance agreement. Any questions?
I think we saw this, this late breaking, Robin?
The redlined copy that, yeah.
Jim, have you had a chance to review this?
No, I haven't, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem.
Trying to look at it now.
Yeah, no problem. John, you got anything to, uh, add to the conversation?
Not at this, not in this moment.
Okay. Dancy Arce here. Did we lose him? All right, well, waiting for Dan. Anybody from the board?
I did have one quick question, and, and maybe I'm, I'm looking at the red, the new red line now, but, um, there's no, I don't see any reference to, and maybe there doesn't need to be any reference to snow removal. Um, it does talk about the maintenance of the road and fixing potholes and so forth, but is there anything that you think that where snow removal needs to be addressed?
I think that's a great point, and I will add that. You're right. This, Dan?
Hey, Dan. Got anything to add? I think you're on mute.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the maintenance agreement, yeah, as long as we're including everything, you know, um, you know, the routine stuff like the, um, the snow removal, and, um, I, I didn't have a chance to review it, so I assume it also includes paving and drainage and all that is, uh, shared between the, the parties equitably.
Or? Um, it's actually, um, the multifamily has the majority of the maintenance requirement. It's not evenly distributed.
Go to the, uh, the equitably part.
Right, but I think to Dan's point, it doesn't specify the work. I mean, I think if this is going to truly be a private road, it should be clear that all maintenance, all repairs, all capital improvements, all replacements, all stormwater be the responsibility of the owners. And you can assess the percent interest however you feel, but, uh, by enumerating certain items and not covering the rest leaves a lot uncovered.
Okay, I can revise that.
Alan, were there common? Alan, were there common drainage improvements that were necessitated by the subdivision? That the lot that's not getting access along the Common Drive? The lot that isn't getting access, was the stormwater management included for that lot?
I don't know the answer. I don't, Joe, Joe Rena, you did the plans, do you know the answer to that? Joe probably stepped away. Oh, there he is.
I'm here, I was sort of, I wasn't really listening, so I asked the question again, please, Dan.
Yeah, the, the question was, in, in segregating the maintenance responsibilities for the Common Drive, because I guess one lot isn't gaining access along the Common Drive, did the lot that does not derive access benefit from the stormwater improvements?
Let me open up the plan real quick here.
So what Dan's asking is, though, the one, the lot that is on, has a driveway on Aspen Road, does that have any stormwater management?
No, the, I, I'm just, I'm opening the drawing just to be certain. If you give me one second here. Okay, so the, the lot that's, that fronts on Aspen Road has its own stormwater management system. Had a, a rain garden for, that was part of the original plan for that. Go on, I could, I can show that to you. So this, it had its own rain garden here, that was dealing with the roof drainage. And it looks like also the, the driveway runoff, and then there's a dry well. In addition to that, there's a dry well right here.
So it looks as though you have a piping connection from?
From, from here to the existing catch basin in the road.
Yeah, across the, that lot, so we needed, do we have an easement for that? Did we do?
I'm sure we do, let me just take a look, see if I have the plaque.
The plaque is in the book.
Yep, so yes, there's an easement right there, across it there.
And that's in favor of those folks being able to maintain that if need be, right?
Right, it's a drainage easement for this, for 13.1. In order to the other dri, the other lots, they may stand, similarly, this second lot has its own drainage system, as well as the proposed parking area with a multifamily. And then this area here was going to be a mitigation area and a stormwater.
How you doing?
Right here.
I'm good, what's cooking?
Oh, thank you, Robin.
Okay.
All right, so it sounds like we have some things we've got to work out.
Okay, so, but, 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 I'm Rich, I get the impression is, if I make it all, maintenance, all capital improvements, so that's just changing paragraph two, that will satisfy Jim.
Yes, it would.
So, Richard, can I just get approval from, from Jim to move forward?
John, how will we work this out? So obviously, there's, there's legalese that need to get addressed. It sounds like, and I appreciate, again, Dan being on.
Yeah, I would think Dan should be signing off on it, too.
Yeah, if Dan is, if Dan is satisfied with it, I think that the adding, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, adding just the word "all" so it's captured in that manner, I think that's, that's a minor change to the easement. I, I, we're, we're going to check to make sure, in terms of the other easement, the drainage easement, that we have that language. But other than that, I think it's minor stuff.
Okay. As far as, as long as Dan is okay with, with some of the other stuff that he was talking about.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no benefit that the, the other lot derives from any of those improvements, then, then I think we can segregate it out of the, the agreement.
Okay. And I'm happy to run it by Jim for Jim's approval prior, if the board approves it tonight.
I think John's got some things to check. So do we hold off? I mean, how will we handle that, John?
I happen to think you can approve it, because the, the changes are minor. And when, when Alan makes the modification, he can send us a copy, send Dan a copy, and Jim a copy. And all three of us, once we're satisfied, if you guys let us go forward in that manner, then we can release it.
Yeah. Are all the members of the board okay with that?
I'm okay.
I'm good with that. Do we have to go to a vote, or?
Yeah, I would make a vote on it.
All right, so I should open a special session?
I don't know if I'll go, session, I'll defer to Jim on it. I think it's really just a, a vote that we can record for all the members are accepting the driveway easement with the, with the minor modifications as discussed.
Yeah, I would agree, it doesn't need to be a special session.
Okay, so, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Alan, you're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I gotta pause for a second, just because Supervisor Slater is filling in for Ed Lackerman tonight. This is just, this is like, you know, the kitchen layout, where you need the fridge, the sink and the stove. We have John, Jim, and Dan. And with the three of these guys here, working together so closely, things like this could address on the spot, so that Alan could move on, do what he's got to do, where it doesn't have to go back and forth. It just really streamline things, and I gotta really say again, we appreciate our professional staff and everybody being here, and I, Matt, thank you.
We're part of the kitchen triangle.
The kitchen triangle. All right, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is Papoose Greek Kitchen. This is a proposed outdoor seating, location is 1983 Commerce Street. Is the applicant on?
How are you?
How are you?
Good. This, this is my first Zoom, so pardon me if I don't know the whole logistics involved.
It's not a problem.
And just by way of.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may, I'm going to have to, I'm sorry.
Hang on one second, Roxanne, what do you got?
I'm going to have to recuse myself from this applicant. I just happen to know him, and he has a shop at one of the properties that I manage.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
And, and likewise, I'm in the odd situation, as I prepared the, the plans for Rui, and had to step away since now and now the conflict, but Rui, you got my plans, what's wrong with them?
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, Rui, you're on. If I said your name right.
You did, thank you. Hello, gentlemen. So I'm proposing to put a patio outside from the restaurant. There's a mulch area that I'd like to extend the patio that's there up to the sidewalk.
Well, if I could ask you a, a screen to share or a plan, do you want to show us?
I sent photos, but I, I don't know if I can, let's see here, give me one second.
Let me see, maybe Robin could do it. You got anything, Robin?
I have the plan.
Can you share it, maybe?
Yep.
Okay. Rui, Robin's gonna, Robin's gonna share it.
Okay.
So, I'll just zoom in on this part.
So that's the front, the shaded area is the proposed extension of the patio.
Rui, how many seats are you proposing?
It says 28, I, I'd like a little less, actually, like 24. But the plans do show 28, but I'm looking to put about six tables of four outside.
Okay, and this area exists?
Well, currently, there's room for three or four tables, but there's a mulch area that's right in front of it.
Okay.
That area does. True.
You're gonna be filling that in?
That's correct.
Okay. It seems pretty straightforward. Any, any comments from the board?
Losing a little grassy area there, is basically it?
Yeah, it's a mulch area, I have photos if you want me to show you on, on my screen.
Now, I know what it looks like, I just wanted, you know, how big an area you're talking about. You're putting down an impervious surface on top of it now?
Yes, it shows in the plan.
Let me, let me jump in on that one, since we, we, we're a little familiar with this. Rui has a concrete patio out there now, and because we're in a designated mainstream area, what he's proposing is permeable pavers, so there's actually a reduction of his impervious application.
Okay.
You said, you said it's a reduction of impervious area?
Right, because his, even though his existing patio is smaller, it's concrete.
Hard to hear.
Yeah, I, I think Rui's got some background noise there.
Oh, yeah, I'm in, I'm in the restaurant. Hold on one second, I'm gonna tell the guys to.
Yeah, no, no, no problem.
And how do you get to the?
Haven't you can mute reduction?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How do you get to the reduction, just quickly?
By, by using permeable, permeable pavers.
So you're taking up the area that is impermeable pavers and replacing with permeable pavers?
Right.
And you get full, full credit in terms of a permeability with those items in DEP's eyes, is that right?
Right, that's right.
Okay. But nevertheless, we, you will go through the process with them and get?
I, I guess I'm not quite sure what to do about it, in that, you know, I feel bad I had to step away from the project, you know, given my.
Yeah, so the application.
With the town.
Right, the application team will go through with it, whoever it is. Yeah, just a couple of things I would say is, I think we, it's important, the material and color of the wall, since it's in the downtown, I think, I think we should understand, you know, the top of the wall, top of wall elevation, bottom of the wall elevation, and how that thing will look, probably, I think some elevations would be helpful.
The intention was, he's right next to Chase Bank, and Chase Bank has like, you know, probably like an 18-inch, two-foot-high wall.
Right.
So, the, the intention was to just sort of match that.
Okay.
You know, just, you know, just keep that theme going.
Yep, so, you know, if those drawings could be produced, that would be great. And then, I'm looking at the hydrant, the little cutout for the hydrant, and I think we, we probably need a blown-up detail for that, just to make sure, depending on how that hydrant is positioned, that guys can actually get in there and, and use it without any obstruction. It looks a little tight the way it's drawn.
Yeah, the fire department will want to see that.
Other than that, I don't have too many other comments presently.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Is there any issue? I hate bringing this issue up, because it's one of my least favorite, but with an increase of 24 seats, do we have to look at parking? I mean, they've got plenty of parking there, so.
Uh, yeah, typically, you have to look at the parking. Usually, the answer for these kinds of things falls in the, that since it's seasonal, typically, it will offset use, indoor usage, because people would prefer to sit outside, and it's atypical to find both the inside and the outside in peak use to be, you know, to be used at maximum occupancy, so that's typically how that works out. But yeah, you need to go through tho, go through those motions.
Well, I think anywhere we could encourage outdoor dining in the downtown area is great, and the food is great, the sangria is even better, so.
You've got to get the special sangria.
This is a great.
I forget what they put in it, but it's very, very good. I thought I was gonna have to recuse myself from this application. This place really is, it's tremendous.
And I imagine this should go of, like, Ibaka and others, because I think some of the, to John's point, you know, the, the wall elevations and maybe even some other softening of the hardscape would be approved for all parties.
Great restaurant. Alan, good luck to you, just get the details so we can work everything out, and we hope to see you very soon. Rui, you're, you're muted.
Yeah?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry about that, thank you very much, I, I appreciate your time, and I will furnish everything that you need.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Care. Okay, next again, they're back. New York Self-Storage, Jeff Simples, discussion of a lighting plan. Location is 61 Bank Road, Kelly. Go on, you're on.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. So, as part of our conditional, conditional approval, you know, we had, you gave us permission to work with the planning department to develop the lighting plan for the site. And as part of that process, we had something come up, and I'm going to share my screen so that we can take a look at it. Let's see if I can share my screen. And I can show you what came up that we, the reason why we're back here to see you all tonight. So, got my plan over here? Okay, so, the lighting code for the Town of Yorktown only allows there to be less than one foot candle of light provided at property lines. And so we have some locations where we're greater than one foot ca, candle at the property line. So I'm just going to zoom in on this, and we can talk about what that means, and the locations where it's going to happen, so just zoom in a little bit here. So, what they're doing for the project is they're reusing the existing locations of the pole-mounted lights. And generally, they're setback from the property line, and we don't have any issues, so, but there are a couple of spots where the lights are close enough to the property line that even with houseside shields, we're getting light spill higher than one foot candle at the property line. So, so I'll, I'll show you the locations, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the site plan, we were before you, and now if you're familiar with the, the reusing the Toys R Us building with a couple of additions, right? So, and Bank Road is on the north, that's this up here. One of the, one of the lights, this particular light location here, so we're removing the existing light fixtures, keeping the poles, reusing the poles, and putting LEDs on there as we discussed with the board. So they're going to have LED light fixtures that'll be full cutoff, so there's no horizontal light spill over 80 degrees, I believe it is, from horizontal. But this particular location, we've got more than one foot candle at the property line along Bank Road. Another location where we have that issue, this location right here, because of the location, so the lights are so close to the property line, we're getting spill out into the right-of-way over one foot candle. In addition, we have the parking lot for Club Fit over here. And this, this light here, these lights are just a few feet from the property line, up against where their parking lot is on the site next door. So this light, this light, there's another one in this location, those three lights on this property line also exceed one foot candle. Um, those three lights on this property line also exceed one foot candle at the property line, so. And, and it's our understanding, uh, based on discussions with the planning department, that we need, um, to talk to the board about it and get your okay with that condition. And as you'll notice, um, on the adjacent site, their site lights are actually uh, really close to the property line and most likely share lights, have lights bill on, on, uh, our site as well, so.
Can you go talk about the lights in the rear? I think you have three wall packs.
We do. So, in addition to utilizing the existing poles around the perimeter of the site, um, we're providing thirteen wall packs, uh, along the outside of the building to fill in, in the locations where, um, there are no pole-mounted lights. So let me just zoom out a little bit here, and we can go through the locations of those. Um, yeah, I can just give you an overview. Sorry, John. I'll give you an overview of the general, um, site lighting plan. So, pole-mounted lights are being utilized, you know, we're replacing the fixtures along the property line, just outside the edge of the parking lot. On, um, so it's on the, the west side, the north side, the east side, and then there's one pole-mounted light that we're using, um, on the south side, in this corner over here. Then, to fill in in the spots where those don't work, uh, you know, where we don't get enough lighting for security, we're providing wall packs, um, on the exterior of the building. So the pole-mounted lights are at sixteen-foot mounted height. The, um, the building-mounted lights are at twelve-foot mounted height, because that works with the architecture, um, where we have it on the front of the building. So thirteen lights mounted to the building. There's existing wall packs that are not full cutoff on the back of the building. Um, and we're removing those and replacing them with full cutoff wall packs, uh, on the building. So there's three the south side, sorry.
At what height?
These are twelve-foot mounted height. The ones that are out there are actually higher than that, and we're removing those.
Okay, so you're lowering them down to twelve feet?
Correct.
That's great. And the one pole, the one pole in the corner, is that existing?
Yeah, all of the poles we're using are existing. We are not proposing any new poles. Just reusing the ones that are already there.
And the color temperature of the bulbs are?
So, the, um, hold on, I will tell you. All right, so, the, um, what have we got? So, the pole-mounted lights are three thousand K. And the wall packs are, let's see. Are also three thousand K. And then, uh, the only other lights we're proposing are the ones underneath the canopy. And those are four thousand K, and that particular, particular light fixture doesn't come, um, in a, a warmer temperature than that.
Thank you.
Okay. But there are other wall packs on the east side at this end. There's one over this door here, some along the western, I mean, the northern facade, sorry, the, the northern facade of each of the new additions. And we didn't need any on the western facade of the building, uh, because the pole-mounted lights are providing sufficient, sufficient light. So.
So, the, the neighboring properties, obviously, there's the gym, their parking lot.
Correct.
Um, that sounds like the most affected outside of Bank Road. Anywhere else to spillage?
So, um, no, not over a fo- not over a foot candle. Uh, this here, actually, in this one spot in the corner, um, is a half a foot candle at the property line, but that's permitted by code. So.
All right, so, John, does the board have the ability to waive the concerns, or do we have to send it to the zoning? The zoning board?
Uh, I don't, no, I don't think it goes to the zoning board, because it's not in the zoning code. It's actually its own chapter, chapter two. So, uh, I think you have the ability, and I, and I would say that, given their existing poles and that the existing condition there is, uh, probably worse.
Yeah, I can't see Club Fit being concerned, or even the, you know, the, the travelers on Bank Road being concerned about it. So I, I, as one member of the board, I don't have an issue. Any of the other members?
I don't have an issue with this. I think this is a commercial area. It's, uh, we want to encourage the development and not raise obstacles. They're using the existing fixtures. I think it should be encouraged. And I don't see any adverse impacts on any of the surrounding properties.
I don't see any, and I own the surrounding property.
Rob, Roxanne, you got anything?
That's good.
Okay, so it sounds like we're, we're fine with this, John.
Great.
All right?
Okay, great.
All right, Dawn, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You have a good night.
Thank you very much. If I can get myself out of here.
Okay, next, we're gonna move to EnviroGreen Associates. This is a discussion of a site plan. Multiple addresses on East Main Street. Joe Rena.
Okay, everybody. Um, on with us tonight are Rick Cipriani, the property owner, uh, Jean Vitrano, the architect, uh, Frankie Liano, landscape architect, and Steve Marino, our environmental consultant. Uh, I had shown you the site plan previously. The site plan hasn't changed when we looked at last month. Um, a couple of things that I want to point out on my end are, um, for the most part, you know, we've got the stormwater worked out. Uh, we're gonna be doing a lot of, uh, porous asphalt in the parking spaces. Uh, we're gonna be using a, a filtering unit, as well as working to possibly, looks like we're gonna try to expand the existing detention or stormwater basin on the property, or build something adjacent to it. Um, so we're well along on that, and we're gonna be close to having that finished up. Uh, two other things that I want to mention to the board are the, the, the parking now as proposed is based on, uh, a three thousand square foot potential restaurant in the, in the new thirteen thousand, three hundred, approximately three hundred square foot building. Um, which amounts to about, I think, forty, forty-six parking spaces required for that. If that space were not parking, uh, was, were not restaurant, that would be twelve parking spaces if it was retail. So, we're, we're probably, you know, although we, we want it incorporated as part of the site plan approval, this area in the back here, which is, um, uh, is forty-four parking spaces. For the most part, we're not gonna need most of that if a restaurant is not one of the tenants. So, we would put that, those spaces in reserve for future use and not build them out. But for the, for the purpose and intent of, uh, of showing uh, maximum potential development that, um, that Mr. Cipriani wants to have, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, keep those on, right? But I just want to make that point and get the board's feeling on that. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up is just to, clarification as to what we're doing with this access here, and, um, whether or not we've come to an agreement with Mr. Malinon on allowing this to go through, or are we still, or is it still blocked at this time, or to be considered blocked? And I I'm gonna ask John if he could maybe he can give us some insight, um, where we stand with that, since, since you guys have been dealing with Malinon, uh, on and off in the past couple of years. Um, other than that, that's, that's all I want to bring up as far as, um, as my, my portion of the project goes. Uh, we've been before, we were before Ibaka and the Conservation Board last week. You have memos on those. Uh, we'll be going back to both, of course, at, uh, as the project moves along. So, at this point, I think first I'm gonna bring, uh, uh, Steve Marino on first, and, uh, have Steve, uh, go over the mitigation plan, which I don't believe that the board has seen, uh, yet. So, uh, do you want me to go on, or do you have any questions for me?
Oh, I think you'll move on.
Okay.
So, Joe, can you bring up the, uh, the mitigation plan?
Yeah, go on, Steve. I'm sorry.
No, I'm not seeing anything.
I wasn't sharing that whole time. Sorry, guys. Uh, let, then let me, let me just go back real quick and uh, to my place. Sorry about that. I wasn't paying attention. Uh, sorry.
No, I think we're all very familiar with the situation.
Okay, but the, here's Steve's plan, but this is the area I was talking about, the additional parking. Okay, sorry about that. Still thought I was, uh, go ahead, Steve.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Steve Marino, Tim Miller Associates. Uh, I'm sure you folk, many of you folks recall the history of this project. Uh, we started out with a project that had two separate buildings, uh, a six thousand square foot and a ten thousand square foot building, utilizing a, a, a way behind as a bypass to get to Lakeland Street. Uh, we locations into the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as to the D E C. Uh, we made some headway with the Army Corps of Engineers, looking at off-site mitigation as part of the project. Uh, D E C, however, became a roadblock when it came to the bypass behind the buildings, because they didn't want to see um, filling of the wetlands in order to create that bypass. We, you know, we went, we spent quite a bit of time explaining to them that was part of a master plan for the neighborhood that the town was on board with, and in the end, hearing it. So, we're back to you now with this one plan with the single building. Uh, the good news from that standpoint is that we went from approximately twelve thousand square feet of wetland impacts with the, with the bypass road, uh, down to now zero, zero feet of wetlands. Essentially, the entire footprint of this project is within areas that are currently either developed or, uh, maintained as lawn area. Uh, the, the parking lot there to the Joe was talking about, that was the part of the site that was the former boarding house. You probably all recall that boarding house that was there. Uh, behind the boarding house was lawn area, and then out, a couple of outbuildings back there. So that's area that's been maintained over the years as, as a maintained landscape. Uh, so we thought that was the appropriate place to put some, uh, spill, uh, over, overflow parking should the, uh, the restaurant plan go. In terms of the adjustments we've made to the mitigation plan, certainly we scaled that back a bit. Uh, the number of plantings has actually increased a little bit with the we're focusing more on, on buffer enhancement. Um, and we're still including a part of the, the, the part of the project for wetland enhancement and restoration. We have a fifty-foot strip from the wetland boundary that we're showing, uh, back into the wetland to clear out associate, uh, associated, uh, shopping carts and old rolled-up carpeting, et cetera, that's kind of stuff that's accumulated back there over the years, as well as, uh, quite a bit of invasive plant material, phragmities and others that are in close proximity to the development, uh, areas on the site currently. So we'll be going in, clearing that the, none, the invasive stuff out, clearing out debris, and then re- as, as shown on the plan, the number of, uh, wetland and, and transitional shrubs and, and trees are posed for the areas adjacent to the new development as a, as a buffer. That's kind of my pitch, if anybody has any specific more than happy to address them.
All right, uh, Frank, you're up.
Good evening, uh, Rick Cipriani. I'm the landscape architect. Uh, as Joe mentioned, this was presented to Ibaka and to the Conservation Board. There were, uh, no comments regarding the landscaping, except positive comments on everything. Uh, every possible spot that could be planted on the site was planted. We're using a hundred percent of the plantings are native, and also, uh, these are the, uh, recommended plantings. The, um, the really only impact, only impact, positive impact here, uh, is along East Main Street. Uh, years ago, it was planted with zelkovia trees that were right along the curb. Uh, several of those are in pretty poor shape. And, uh, with the new, um, now what there will be is a grass strip between the, uh, the road and the, um, sidewalk, um, where snow would be bound, uh, from East Main Street. And so all the new street trees would be on the, uh, the property and not off the property. They are spaced forty-five feet apart, which is standard for street trees, and, um, we are using the, um, native, um, red maple, which is a, uh, a serubum. Um, compatible with the other trees on the road, and one of the trees as, uh, recommended by the, by the town. There is, um, extensive plantings along not only the wetland plantings, this is in addition to any wetlands. Um, all along the front of the building, uh, the entire island between the roadway and the parking are also planted with native material to provide some screening, not high, just enough, uh, to provide bump in height screening from East Main Street. If there's any questions, uh, if you could detect them.
Okay. Yes, you can move on. Okay. Uh, Jean?
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Jean Vitrano with San Mancini Architects. Uh, I unfortunately was not able to attend the Ibaka meeting, and I received their list of concerns this morning, so I'll try to address their concerns. And then if you have any additional questions, I'll certainly be happy to answer them. Uh, so as, as Joe mentioned, we're proposing a thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight square foot structure. The building is a hundred and ninety-one feet long and seventy and a half feet deep. Uh, we laid out conceptual drawings with a hip roof. As a matter of fact, you know what, Joe? I'd like to share the screen. I want to just share with the board some photographs of the adjoining buildings, just to remind them of the streetscape. Let me see if I can find, here we go. So what I'd like to do is just walk you down the street. I know you're familiar with it, but this will help when I try to answer some of the concerns of, uh, Ibaka. This is on the, uh, south, the same side as our proposed building before it, heading Oh, I'm sorry. Where am I? Let's see. Hold on. Uh-huh, hang on. Can't see my screen?
Not yet.
Let me try this again. What's that? Yes? Can you see it now?
Says it's sharing, but don't see anything.
There you go.
There you go. Yep.
Good deal. All right, so again, this is the, uh, first building heading west. This is the building that's, uh, will be for our proposed building. Uh, and I would just want you to take note of the signage and the, uh, the roof. Again, just as a, uh, reminder when I tried to respond to, uh, concerns of Ibaka. This is the building that will just, is just west of our proposed building. Uh, the next photograph is the building that, again, is a little bit further west. I took photographs of the buildings directly across the street, again, just to remind you of the streetscape.
You haven't changed yet.
Haven't changed?
We're still on the first photograph.
Huh, it's telling me that I'm changing. I'm sorry.
Did you share the screen or just the picture?
Sharing the picture. Does that come up?
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you very much. All right, so again, that's the building that's just west of our proposed building. That is also Mr. Cipriani's building. Uh, can you see the new one? Does this come up?
Not yet.
Okay, let's try that again. I need my daughter to help me again. I need my IT department to help me. Trying to share this. It says that I'm sharing. You share? Okay. All right, IT's bailing me out. See it now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this will be two buildings west of our building. And then, then again, I think you're familiar with the buildings across the street also, so I'll I'll stop it at that if, if, if that's okay. This is the this is the This is the, this is the church, right directly across the street. Share, share. This is further west across the street. And one more if I may. Share. And this is the building just further west, uh, before the, uh, the diner. I didn't take a picture of the diner because I'm sure you know what's going on there. You've seen the scaffolding around it. All right, new share. That being said, I'd like now to go to the front elevation. Uh, this is our propos- proposed front elevation. Uh, one of the concerns from Ibaka was the base wall. We had initially, uh, our first go-around showed a, uh, a horizontal siding. They suggested that we change that, they weren't too thrilled with horizontal siding. So in reviewing Mr. Cipriani today, we decided that we would go with a, uh, a faux stone, either a, an El Dorado stone or equal. Uh, they were concerned with the banding that has the signage on it. They said that it was too large, but again, if you remember the first building that I showed you, their signage is larger than ours. We have a three-foot signage band, the lettering is proposed to be two-foot high. Uh, they were also concerned with the width of the columns. Those columns are fourteen inches wide. Uh, they were concerned with the height.
But Gene, they're not really columns, right?
They're not columns, no, they're not. As you'll see, you know what, let me go to the, uh, hey, Joe?
Yeah.
Now, hold on a second, let me go to the rendering. Go back to the rendering. Okay. So you see that they're not columns, they, we just, we built them into the storefront, just to break up a continuous storefront. And again, we've, we've shown eight separate entrances. At this point, uh, in discussion with Mr. Cipriani, we're not sure how many tenants we're going to have in that building yet. So we illustrated eight separate entrances. They're different sizes because again, dependent upon the tenant, they may need more space. There may end up being only six entrances. Uh, the, uh, the dorm is on the top, are all false dormers. There is no attic space, uh, in order to try to keep construction costs at a, uh, reasonable number. We're proposing to construct that roof out of a trust system. Uh, Ibaka was also concerned with the side elevation, so we continued the base wall around. And again, dependent on tenants, we showed a storefront for the first bay. If they want to display on the sides, this may be glass, this may be glass. The rear portion certainly will not, that'll be space for, uh, office, storage, uh, mechanical and so on, uh, toilets. So again, those were some of the concerns of Ibaka. Uh, they were also concerned with the overhang. Uh, what we did is we readdressed the, the roof line. This overhang is going to go out four feet. They were concerned that the doors would open, uh, into open space rather than being protected by the overhang. So this overhang is going to go out four feet. They also, uh, they were concerned about the roof. Uh, I don't know, we kind of like the roof. We think it's an attractive-looking building. Uh, we've reviewed this again with Mr. Cipriani at length. They suggested we look at a phony mansard, which I'm not too thrilled about having this building with a phony mansard across the street from that brown building with the mansard. I don't think that does anything for the streetscape, but again, that's our, our opinion. I'll discuss it longer with Mr. Mr. Cipriani. Uh, they also had some discussions about utilizing some of the site for possibly outdoor seating. And again, in discussing with Mr. Cipriani and he could share his thoughts, he wasn't overly enthusiastic about that. And I don't know if that affects the parking or not, Joe, and it affects the landscaping. You may want to address that.
Well, we take, I mean, the only, the only reason, uh, and again, you know, I'm discussing this with, 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 uh, Rick is, uh, if, if he had off the bat, a restaurant tenant, I mean, that would be a, a, a reason to do a gathering area, have some outdoor dining, um, with the, the, you, you know, but of course, we, we don't know that at this time. And the only way to accomplish that would be reducing the building, you know, and we've already gone from our original plan of sixteen thousand square feet, we've cut off almost approximately three thousand square feet off of that. So, um, that's not desirable right now. That, that alcove area where you have that recessed entry there, there's, you know, that's a potential, if you had a restaurant used there, that's a potential area that could be commandeered for outdoor seating. So there, there is, there is an area there if we, if we, uh, uh, go in that direction. But, um, as far as creating a, a new outdoor seating area or gathering area, uh, and cutting into the building, that's not something he's prepared to do right now.
Another item they a- addressed was the, uh, the material to be used for the horizontal siding. Uh, we're, we're proposing to use either a hardy plank. I'm also looking at Everlast and Allsite Ascend. They make a, uh, synthetic, uh, cladding also. So one of those three, uh, probably the materials that we use for the horizontal siding. And then obviously for all the trim boards, fascias, stuff, it's either a hardy plank or a, an AZAC. I think I addressed most of the concerns of Ibaka. And again, I apologize that I couldn't make that meeting last week. I was committed to a meeting where I live, but we will readdress their concerns. Uh, Mr. Cipriani would prefer that the shading of the building be gray, dark gray to light gray. So we, we changed the rendering to, uh, to illustrate that. Obviously, the signage is going to have to be approved, separate submission. But again, they're concerned with the sign, size of the signs. They said that the banding, I guess, would detract from the other buildings. I disagree with them. I think a two-foot-high sign is certainly less than what's on either side of it right now. So, uh, kind of, we're going to stick to our guns on the sign and see what happens moving forward.
Uh, Gene, what about the me- the mechanicals, or are you going to tuck them in?
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, obviously, we need to, you know, s- out, outdoor units. And looking at your site plan, you have that buffer like in the middle of the parking, in the rear of the, uh, rear of the building. What if we, can we use that and screen that? I don't have your site plan. You know what I'm talking about?
So you'll have to unshare for me to bring.
All right. Off share, because obviously we can hide whatever we, we possibly can up in the roof or the, the attic space. Go ahead, Joe. Yeah, so that space back there where you have, that's it. Well, right where you have the, uh, the hatch lines, the forty-five-degree angle line?
Right there. Oh, here?
Yeah, right, yeah, I'm sorry, right above that, yep. Right in there, do we have room in there to put a bed? And if we screen that?
Yeah, we could, we, we could probably do that and, and Frank could, could screen it. That's not an issue. So you've got that area there, you've got this little area here. Um, and we've also got this area.
I mean, I, I think that's our preference, because again, we, we, not that we're adverse to a mansard roof, but we, we feel fairly comfortable with the way the building looks now unless Mr. Cipriani feels differently about it. Rich, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. People that know me, I'm fifty years in the construction business, dirt, rock, et cetera. I don't do flat roofs. Okay, I want pitched roofs, first of all, it looks better, it's a nicer building and, and you know you don't have a problem with the water. So that's going to be not a flat roof. We're not, I'm not entertaining that. In reference to, um, the, the space for, uh, for people to gather and stuff, we're submitting this building, we're hoping to get a national tenant. Uh, so, so if, depending on, on who it is or, or what it is, i- if we're going to have to make adjustments, we'll make adjustments at that time to satisfy the situation. Um, in reference to the utilities and stuff, the back of the building, I don't know, I, I, which I've seen, you know, are usually right along that walkway or something and, 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 and some of the stuff can be put there. And I don't know if it has to necessarily be screened, it's the back of the building, deliveries come there. Uh, you know, we're not, we're not going to show anything from the side or the front. So I don't quite understand the concern with Ibaka from that. That's about it for me.
And if, if anyone has any questions, I'd certainly be more than happy to answer them.
Sure.
Again, this is the first concept, so just, this is step one.
Anybody from the board have any questions, concerns?
I think that we should consider somewhere in that parking area, a couple of recharging stations for electric vehicles.
Good point.
You know, this is, uh, it's absolutely something that's going to be so needed moving forward, the way you see, I mean, it was a few announcements this week from some of these big, uh, motor vehicle companies and it just, things are changing quickly. I agree with Aaron, I think almost anybody who puts in a development like this, I don't think we should ask, you know, it should be, how many are they going to be putting in that, if? I'm sure I saw. Was that Rich?
Uh, am I, I, you know, I've seen them at some areas, um, and I understand what you're, you're driving at. It's, uh, it's kind of touching to me because I think China controls ninety or ninety-five percent of the rare earth they use on the batteries and, and we're, we're running into make, going to make more electric cars and, 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 uh, we'd better find a solution for the materials to, to, to be used to make batteries. But from neither of, now, I don't mind putting some charge stations in, I'm not, I'm, I don't know. I don't have a feel of, okay, if we, you know, maybe like you say, you put two in the back or something, um. I, I guess it's something new, it just don't have, I'm not saying that we, that wouldn't do it. It, it's, uh, okay, where do you put them, we're going to use them when, I understand all of that. We, we have some electric cars in the family. We have, you know, at our buildings, we have charging at the houses and stuff, um, we have it, but, uh, a- and I can say in Florida, there's areas where they put twenty of them set up just for that, for people to go pull in. So I, I, you know, again, you put a couple of them over here, uh, whether they'll get used or not, how to, how, how the, uh, um, the, uh, car user pays for the, I'm not familiar with that at that.
It's a revenue maker.
What's that? Yeah.
It's a revenue maker. We're, we're looking, where I work during the day, we're looking to put them at our facilities.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's really, it's just, uh, it's become something that's really taken, uh, I want to say fast track. But, that being said, no one's looking for you to come up with any answers now. I think if we could, to the members of the board, does everybody kind of feel favorable otherwise with the application that we're seeing?
Yes, I do.
I would, I would back this application, it seems to me that he's, uh, got all the points covered.
Aaron, Rob?
It's got to be subject to review, of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we've got a ways to go, but conceptually, I think this is the way to, this is the direction we need to move, to move on and get more details on, on the site and its operation, especially since it's right next to, uh, sensitive wetlands.
Agreed. Rob?
You know, I think it's great, um, my, you know, questions are things like the, uh, trash receptacles, you know, the containers, where would they be and so forth? But that's details, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and Rich and, and, and Joe and crew, I would say, uh, I would sit down with, you know, with your, the group of professionals that's on now, uh, you know, and, and work through a lot of these, these, uh, design issues. So that when you get back to us next time, uh, do some of these things answered. Makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, we're not talking about changing the site plan because we have entertained.
We are very, very well, Mr. Cipriani, of all the iterations of the site plan.
Okay.
Yes, we, we, we're aware what you guys have gone through, absolutely.
No, and you guys have been great, I just, my complaints with the D E C.
No, it, we, we, we had to issue ourselves.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, whatever else, yes, we'll spend time in addressing.
All right, Joe, John, anything to add? Yeah, just, so my question that I asked earlier and, uh, I was hoping maybe John has some insight, um, regarding the connection to Malin and whether we're going to still continue to have this note on there that it's going to be blocked, um.
Which side, which, which side of the project are you talking about, just so everybody knows?
Right, right here.
Okay.
Well, um, we haven't seen Mr. Malin in, in a while. Uh, but I, his site plan requires that opening and it is built that way now. And I don't think that you, I'm not sure what your note says, Joe. I, I don't think it requires a note. Uh, I think, I think if they, if the openings meet up and they are operational, that's great. Mr. Malin can control his property. Uh, he can put up, uh, a wooden, wooden sawhorse or something like that if he chooses. Uh, so I don't think that the, I don't, I don't think that the requirement is any, is any longer to require an access easement from him. But I think practicality, uh, as in many of the, uh, commercial sites that we have connected, which don't have access easements, they function and the operators of the individual sites realize their utility and keep them open. So I think that's, that's my, um, recommendation on it at present.
Okay. All right, well, so we're going to take that note off and it, it, it is what it will be, I guess.
Can you blow it up to, just so we can take a last look? Okay. Yeah, that, um.
That, you know, that's a holdover note that.
Yes.
You know, but I just don't know whether we should keep it on there or not, it's kind of whatever.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think the, it bears further discussion, but I think, um, I, I, I personally don't think presently that you need to have the note or to have a site plan requirement that says that you're going to connect two driveways and they, they should be blocked until such time. I don't think that you need the access agreement. Um, I don't think that most, if not all, of the commercial sites now that are connected and in, uh, separate ownerships have access agreements. There's a couple, but they are a little bit more complicated than just, um, access. They have some parking issues.
Okay. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Joe, you're next again. All right, don't go far away. Next on the agenda, we have a town board referral, fourteen ninety-six Old Logging Road. Joe, read it. Um, just give me one second, yeah. Robin, I think we got an email on this today. Am I thinking something else?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let me, let me just dial up the location here. See what we're talking about. Okay. So the, uh, properties that we talked about, Mr. Ian Coppola's owns several.
Are you going to share your screen, Joe?
Oh, sorry, thank you, Robin.
I'll cut you off before you get too far.
Joe, what's going on? Are you all right? I don't know. Anyway, okay.
You skipped a meeting, that's the problem.
Oh, boy. Okay. Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so Mr. Ian Coppola's owns several properties, over here he owns, uh, these three properties here. And I believe he may own one other property over in this area here. And, um, he's looking to acquire the back portion of this property, um, which currently fronts on Baptist Church Road. And, uh, he wants to add on to that as, uh, um, he, he's basically, uh, creating, uh, properties for each of his children so that they can each have a residence of their own. So I'll, the idea is if he can gain access to this, this piece that he wants to newly acqui- newly acquire.
piece that he wants to newly acqui- newly acquire, he, um, he will then move ahead with working with this property owner, subdividing this piece off, and, and then getting access, getting alternate access, so he does not have to go through this property here to get to this new lot that he's create, that he wants to create. So, um, that brings us to the proposed plan, so this is, this is that site where, you know, this is the cul-de-sac to the end of Old Logging Road. Um, this accessway, he owns all three of these accessways, they're all, uh, his properties, and this is the, the piece that he would like to acquire in the back here, and this is the proposed dividing line. So in order to get there, he would like to construct a new driveway that would bring him into that, into that site and connect, uh, connect up with that site, there's a small cottage on that site, yeah. Um, so with that said, he'd be building approximately eighteen hundred linear feet of driveway. Um, the driveway will traverse along the edge uh, of a slope, so you have a little hollow here that goes down to this wetland area, you know, this is, it's more, uh, Steve, did you say on, Steve?
I'm, I'm here, but I don't know if you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Um, my, my computer's crapping out on me, but I can hear everything you're saying, Joe.
Okay, so there's this, uh, smaller area here, it's a wetland, but it's kind of more of a pond, and as I said, Steve can explain that a little better. Uh, so we, uh, as I was saying, there's a little hollow that goes down here, and then the, then the property rises along the edge here, so the driveway's kind of riding the edge of that. Uh, we've got, we've designed it so we're almost, uh, a fully balanced cut-fill job. Um, there's approximately fifty trees that need to be removed to, to construct this, uh, we're gonna be working on a tree mitigation plan, uh, that, that's gonna be coming along, um, that, that Steve's gonna put together some mitigation. And we've got two stormwater basins, one here and one here that we're proposing, and they're, they're both pocket wetlands. Now, this is a bio retention and this is a pocket wetland there. Um, and that, and that's, that's the extent of what we're looking to do for this, this project. Um, we've prepared a slip already, uh, most of the trees that identified, after we laid everything out, there was some areas outs- that, that were within areas that we have, we're showing disturbance of grading that we didn't anticipate previously, so we're waiting on an updated tree survey for that. Um, Steve is working on a mitigation plan, both for, uh, wetland buffering packs as well as for, uh, for the tree mitigation, and, and I should just point out that this is the buffer line right here. Uh, this is the buffer line right here, so, anything in the, any, any improvements in this area or within the, uh, uh, the buffer of this wetland? Um, Steve, you want to add anything to that, or, or can you, can you see the plan, or?
I can, no, I can't see anything unfortunately, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, at the bottom of the hill there, there's a, a pretty nat- natural wetland down there at the bottom. Uh, you know, there's gonna be some rock required to get that driveway around that corner, uh, you know, we think, we think it can be graded out as such, so that the wetland doesn't need to be impacted, you know, a, a lot of erosion controls will be required during construction, but, you know, that's all, and it can certainly be done to protect the wetland. Of, once it's in place permanently, you know, it won't have any impact on the, gonna be a question of just, that we need to be careful, um, and we're certainly gonna be putting together a mitigation plan for buffer encroachment as well as, uh, tree removal. Um, variety of trees out there, most of what we're, you know, most of the larger trees we're looking at will be preserved. Uh, you know, we're working through those kind of details right now. You know, certainly, it's, it's only a driveway, and, uh, Joe's gonna be pulling the runoff and, and the clean water's getting back into the wetland, so, um, I, I think you'll be, you'll, you'll, I, with the concept, once we, we, once we show you a fully fleshed out plan.
Okay, thank you. Any, first with the board, any questions, concerns, thoughts?
Why are we doing it this way? I mean, in this order, you know, the driveway first and then the subdivision second.
Uh, because, because if he, if he can't get this alternative access, he's not gonna move ahead with the subdivision, so, you know, you, we could, could, I, I, I assume there's some way to condition the construction of the driveway with the, uh, um, you know, with, with the completion of the subdivision, at least that's what the, the prop, the, uh, the attorney representing the project, uh, John Buckley, that's, uh, that's what he's maintaining, and that's why we're doing it this way.
I, I question that route. No pun intended. I, uh, I think the driveway and the subdivision are dependent upon one another and probably need to be in the same process, is my guess.
Maybe that's the case, yeah.
Is Jim still there? I see, it looks like he's screaming blank. All right, so then, John, what do we do here? This is from the town board, do we send a, a, a letter back that we think that needs to be inclusive?
Well, I think, Robin, do you wanna go through the, the history here, I think this lot exists, but it's not a building lot, is that right, Robin?
I believe that the, they filed a deed to, for Mr. Yancopoulos to purchase this lot from the neighbor, and that, that's all that's happened.
Right, so it's not, it's not a, a, a building lot, it was just a transfer of property.
Correct.
So, I, you know, I think it's an illegal, illegal as a building lot, or, or, or for that particular residence, really, so, needs a subdivision regardless, whether it gets the driveway or not. Cause the lot exists now.
So how do we proceed?
Well, I think if you agree with that, you can, uh, send a memo to the town board that suggests that, uh, it's, this issue should be resting with you, um, as a subdivision, which includes the driveway, uh, you know, let's, I, I think, I think the driveway and the subdivision are dependent upon one another, I don't know that you can separate them out, really. So, and then, in that case, send a memo to the, uh, town board suggesting that, uh, this application belongs with you.
Okay, I see Dan just popped on.
I, I was wondering on this, I mean, however this goes, it seems even as a subdivision, it's not gonna be compliant on frontage, so is this something that will also require the Z B A?
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks, Dan, I was just gonna point that out, I don't see any frontage for this lot.
All right, so is everybody in the board in agreement that we'll send that letter to, uh, the town board that it's gonna come back to us?
Yes.
All right, so I don't see any disagreement, so John will proceed that way.
Okay.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, that's, it, it is what it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
And, he's still here. We thought he was gonna leave. All right, so next on the agenda, we have the Dell Avenue Solar Farm. This is a discussion of site plan and special use permit, location is two hundred Dell Avenue. Honorable Mr. Steinmetz, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, sorry to disappoint you, I am still here.
There are bets going.
Good, good, note, I'm not even gonna make any jokes about your kitchen triangle, I'm gonna let that go. Um, good to see all of you, uh, here tonight, uh, once again with what we all commonly refer to as the croton overlook property, uh, but, uh, like, uh, a, a good easement or a restrictive covenant, uh, Zarensteinmetz appears to run with the land, and, uh, we have essentially been handed off, um, from, uh, Mr. Matthews, who is on this evening, to, uh, Seoul Systems, so I'm pleased to, uh, advise the board that my partner Jody Cross and I are now working with Seoul Systems in connection with the Dell Avenue uh, solar application, I'm joined tonight by Nick Mento and Rennie Friedman from Seoul. Um, a- and, as you will come to learn, Seoul is one of the preeminent, uh, solar and renewable energy uh, companies in, in the nation, and we're excited to be working with them on this project. In a nutshell, y- you guys will all remember, we, we raised, um, this at our last meeting with you a couple of months back, where Matt Matthews, the present owner of the property, uh, was faced with a decision whether to pursue his residential uh, townhouse project, which many of you, uh, found appealing and attractive, et cetera, or to pivot, um, with Seoul to a, uh, a solar project, and the sense that, that Matt got from, uh, the board's consensus at that meeting was that, uh, advancing with Seoul made, made sense. Uh, so Jody, Nick, Rennie and I have filed an application for essentially a twenty acre ground-mounted solar array, and I can let Nick and Rennie go through, uh, some of the, the, the details. We filed an application for the, uh, ground-mounted solar array and a renewable energy storage or battery storage area. All of this can be done onsite, um, we think in a fashion that's almost, um, in the identical area of, uh, disturbance associated with the residential project, uh, that previously went through the approvals process on rezoning. Uh, as, again, for the benefit of the record and for the public, it is a sixty-five acre site, uh, right off of Route one hundred at the intersection of one hundred and one thirty-four, um, and the area of disturbance in question is only twenty acres. We have been in touch with, uh, one of our large neighbors, uh, to whom we've referred in the past. Um, we've remained in close contact with his various, uh, attorneys, uh, and trying to keep them abreast of the application, and as we advance through the process, I, I think we're gonna end up with support from this neighbor who will not be able to see any of the, uh, solar array. So, we're here tonight really to introduce the application, I, I'm happy to let, uh, Nick and Rennie, uh, walk you through a couple of very basic um, fundamentals of, of the solar array, we, we're happy to share a screen and show you our preliminary conceptual design, which was submitted by our office, and as we shared with your professional staff, we're really here tonight primarily to just get the process started, what do I mean by that? When we filed the rezoning petition most recently, Jody and I asked you and the town board to decide who would be lead agency for secret purposes, and it ended up, uh, falling to you. We're here once again tonight asking that you, uh, essentially reissue your, uh, intent or designate your intent to serve as lead agency with regard to the solar application, because as, as Nick and Rennie can explain, in light of the, uh, process with the state and various state regulatory agencies, it's very important that they at least can turn to the state and say, the Yorktown Planning Board, as opposed to the Yorktown Town Board or someone else, has intent, has designated its intent to serve as lead agency, that puts them in a certain queue. So, we're asking that you simply start the thirty-day clock, I cannot imagine that you're gonna defer to the town board on lead agency, since you are the special permit authority, um, in connection with this, so procedurally, Mr. Chairman, that's the only thing I really would like to try to accomplish. Um, we can discuss whether or not you wish to, um, set any kind of public information session down the road, but we would like to start the secret process if we can. And Nick, I'm gonna turn it over to you for just a couple of minutes, just general background on Seoul and the, uh, and the application.
Just, uh, very quickly, I just wanna, uh, sorry, David, correct you, it's fifty-nine point three five acres, cause it's only one of the two lots, and sixteen acres of disturbance, so just for the record, I wanted to make that.
Thanks, David, thanks, Jody, hi, everyone, um, so, I'm Nick Mento, I'm the project development manager on this project. I will share my screen here and just kind of do a quick overview of our project here. Give me one second. And this will be the same site plan that, that was shared as part of the application, uh, but just wanna point out a few key factors here. So, as was mentioned before, this is about, you know, a little, just a tad over sixteen acres of area that we'd be utilizing here. Uh, and a couple of key factors, so the solar array itself is what's called the fixed tilt ground mount system, and that's important for the sake of this meeting, only because that means everything's gonna be pointing due south. This is opposed to, um, say, a single axis tracker, which is something that it goes from east to west. So, I know that's a consideration that's often, uh, observed by neighbors, and the battery system, just for reference, is currently located down here, and I'm happy to entertain any questions about that as well. Um, and there was a reference to neighbors, and I'm sure you all have become familiar with this site over what seems to be the, the past few years at least, but, um, as you, so right along here, there is a, uh, kind of rock overcrop, uh, or outcrop that, um, there's a steep incline here, so, um, the neighbors shouldn't see the solar array. Um, but from a high level, that's, I just kinda wanted to bring the site plan up and see if there were any kind of initial questions or comments on what we.
Nick, if you would just hit two things from me for, for the record, one would be that just the size of the megawatts and why the location of this site is particularly conducive because of its proximity to the grid, if you would just hit that, please.
Yeah, so this is a, uh, this is a, a, a three point six two five megawatt, uh, solar array. Um, and the battery system is about three point seven five megawatts. Um, and the, basically the location, so there's obviously a lot of areas that people always think you can put solar, but, um, one of the air, one of the reasons that this site's so, um, I guess attractive in terms of being able to connect to the grid is because the main item that you need to be able to locate a solar facility somewhere to connect it, um, and so here, we're connecting straight to the grid. And we need to do that is, uh, the electric lines along the road there, along one hundred, um, you know, there three-phase lines that are connected to enough demand that will essentially allow us to connect there, so, basically, the existing electrical infrastructure is built up enough that we're able to connect the solar array to it. Um, you know, a lot of people have the single phase, um, and sometimes even three-phase lines going along the neighborhood streets, but a lot of times there just isn't enough, um, demand in the area, or the electrical infrastructure just isn't, um, lack of a better term, heavy-duty enough to manage this kind of electric going on the grid, so, um, long story short, this type of electrical infrastructure isn't, um, it's not impossible to find, but it's also not, uh, easy to find near space that a solar array could go.
Thanks, Nick. So, we're really happy, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, you can unshare, Nick, if you, if you can. Um, we're happy to answer any questions, go through anything technical, I just wanna remind the board that one of the comments from, I think more than one of you at that meeting was, one of the advantages of what Matt Matthews has decided to do by pursuing, uh, allowing his site to be developed in this fashion rather than the residential, it's, it's not permanent, it's got a durational uh, benefit for society over the next, let's call it twenty-plus years, uh, but this is not a commitment forever for this property to be developed in, in one particular fashion, so, uh, it, it allows for some future flexibility, et cetera.
If I could ask one general question, not specific to this site, but, and I don't know, Nick, I'm, Rennie, I'm sure you're familiar with, like, Indian Point shutting down, and that going off the grid, I gotta imagine that we're gonna see more, we have seen quite a few in Yorktown, but I gotta think we're gonna see more and more of these, um, put in because we're just not getting the, the power supplied, is that, I mean, are these things gonna pop up all over, even the, in the, the areas where you don't necessarily have the, uh, the infrastructure to connect to, are these gonna pop up everywhere?
Yeah, so, I guess you'd say, so New York has a policy or, uh, a law that was passed in the past few years that basically requires, I believe it's six gigawatts of solar by, I believe, twenty thirty, tw- no, six gigawatts by twenty twenty-five, actually. no, six gigawatts by 2025, actually. And so to put that in perspective, we're at about, as of the end of 2020, I think it was 2.7 gigawatts. And so, long story short, yeah, across the state, they are kind of popping up all over the place, and there is going to be a lot of demand for these everywhere, everywhere that there's space. And there are a lot of areas that you can put them already. Not to say that you can't upgrade infrastructure to meet this demand, but it's a lot more difficult.
Rich, just a quick comment, Rich. Although your question's somewhat off-topic, it's obviously interesting and it's relevant. I can tell you that we are hearing that there's going to be an even greater demand for the battery storage capability in and around the Indian Point area and the Buchanan substation. Because of the lack of energy being generated right there, they need to have the capability to deal with peaks and valleys in energy flow. There was actually a presentation on this at the Hudson Valley Chamber of Commerce about two months ago. And you'd be interested, because that's exactly what they were talking about, is how to deal with the grid when it has a high demand versus when it has low demand. And apparently, the battery storage provides greater flexibility if you can locate it correctly.
And I think as we've seen a lot of these applications come in, I know this board has been very concerned about, you know, the view shed impacts on neighbors. And honestly, most of them outside of one was really in an area like this one where it doesn't appear that there's going to be any real impact on anybody's view shed.
That's certainly our position, and as we go forward in the secret process with you, and we've discussed this with the neighbor as well, we will be doing engineering cross-sections and a pretty detailed view analysis so that we will know what's visible and, most importantly, really, what's not visible.
Okay. Well, tonight, you want us to declare that we'll... I'm sorry, Bill.
I have a question for the applicant. Being that it's a large portion of the property that's underutilized in the future, if there's a demand, which there probably will be, can this site be expanded?
So I think we talked a little bit about this, and I want to make sure that this is clear. The only thing that's presently before the board is this, Jody corrected me, 16-acre site, if I understand that correctly, slightly under 20. So you're right, Bill, there's over 45 acres that's not subject to the transaction between Mr. Matthews and Seoul. So something could go on on that property. But i-in all practical reality, it is the most physically challenged portion of the property because of slopes. But no one is standing before you this evening or sitting and telling you that nothing else could ever happen on the balance of the property, not at this point.
I was considering the expansion of the solar, not...
I understand that. I understand that. At the moment, you know, Seoul is not asking for that, and Mr. Matthews hasn't leased his property for that. But you are correct, that theoretically could be a subsequent application. I think that'd be a good point. Thank you.
So at this point, the applicants asked us if we planned on declaring ourselves lead agency. John, Jim, any issue?
I think what he said was stating your intention to declare.
Stating our intention.
That's exactly right.
I missed so. Thank you.
The type-one action. And by the way, David, I'm glad to know we're not the only law firm with the younger attorneys trying to correct the older ones.
You've now noted that for the record, it's now noted for the record twice, so...
I would like a copy of the minutes, please.
Suitable for framing.
All right, so John, do we have any issue with doing that?
No, that's standard, and we can get that work sent out and on its way, so we can get that timeframe started. That's fine.
Okay. Anything else, David?
Oh, good. This is terrific. We look forward to getting back and continuing the process, and I think this is going to be an exciting and hopefully beneficial project for everybody.
Okay. We missing anything?
Never.
Okay, guys. Thank you very much.
Actually, we're missing King Card. Where's King Card?
On a trip.
That's why things are getting done tonight, gentlemen and ladies.
Nobody to comment on the minutes.
Take care, everybody. Good to see you.
Have a good night.
Okay, take care.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we have one more item on the agenda, and that is discussion on the overlay districts. All right, so I know we've, a letter was circulated that was going to go to the board. I think at this point, has everybody had the chance to take a look at that and review it?
I have one comment. I think the letter overall is excellent. I think it expresses the points that we made last week, last meeting, rather. And it comes out, you know, in support of the concept, which is just really discussing the implementation of it, which is, I think, the proper position for us to take. The only concern I have is, I noticed, and maybe I'm not correct on this, but in the Jefferson Valley District, the border was expanded to include the Hill property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, to me, is a good thing. The opposite is true of including, in my mind, the Soundview property. And I would like the opportunity to take two resolutions on this. One, in support of the procedural aspects of our memo, and one to, you know, basically for the board to go on record on, in terms of the district boundaries. Because I don't think the Soundview should be included there. Not that I'm opposed to the development of that property, but I think it's very unique and it's in its position in the neighborhood and its proximity to other residential properties. And I think it should be studied and dealt with separately by the town board and not as part of a general blanket overlay district. And the other concern that I have is the EAF that was done by the town in support of this legislation. And conceptually, when do you consider the impacts of all these potential developments at this stage or as they come forward one by one? You know, that's another concern I have, but I'm not sure of the answer to that. So I got three things. One, I think there should be, I'd like two votes. And the third question is on the EAF that I have.
The EAF? I'm sorry. I agree with what you, Aaron, on the Soundview, because that project should stand on its own. And as far as the Hill property goes, that's a good point. So I'm in agreement with you.
Thank you.
Could I, just as a point of discussion, when you guys say "stand on its own", every project needs to stand on its own merits, its own... I think the idea of the overlay district is to provide the bodies, whether it's our agency or our board or somebody else, someone else, the ability to flex, if you will, for lack of a better term. I'm not quite sure why such an important parcel of property that's adjacent to the Heights District we would want to eliminate from that capability, unless I'm not understanding your intent by it having to stand on its own merit. Every project must.
I think my thinking is that I would rather see that project studied and developed separately from the rest of the downtown area, because it's not quite in the same classification, in my mind, as the other properties. Yorktown Green, the downtown streets, all of those things have things in common and would benefit from the overlay district and the flexibility that it affords. But to take it over to Soundview, I think that needs its own set of parameters that are not necessarily the same that I would look for in the downtown area. So to me, there's a distinction that we should make.
So I think the development of that piece of property could be so integral to the, I don't want to say revitalization, because, you know, we have a fairly, I know people will say there's a lot of empty storefronts and other things, but, you know, just putting the park benches back in front of the Rexall Drugstore tells you what our downtown area is, you know, is consistently improving. I think the proper development of the Soundview property can have a huge impact on, a positive impact potentially on the downtown area. Does it mean we're, you know, is it urban sprawl? No, I don't think so. But is it an opportunity to create a, a situation where that benefits the balance of the downtown area? If you look at it in a more cohesive, more comprehensive manner? That's why I just think if the idea of the overlay district is to provide some latitude and some flexibility and some, I don't want to use the term "compromise", because that's typically often used in a very negative fashion, but in collaborating around the right things to do for the overall area, I think that piece of property could be very integral to the continued revitalization of the downtown area. And there's other areas around that downtown area as well that could be considered. But I think we have to put aside the current plan that's in front of us and just say, if that piece of property were, had no plan associated with it right now, should it be an integral part to the downtown area? Just something for consideration.
I actually agree with you, Rob. I believe that that's a big part of the walking area that we're trying to build in town, where you have Town Hall, you have that, that four corners there is an important part of town that should be developed in a way that will benefit the community as well. And I think it should be part of the overlay district, the Yorktown Heights.
I think something we talked about at the last meeting was that we were concerned that the board be the one to kind of set the areas and that we do the planning end of it. And John, this is to John Taggart, unless I'm mistaken, even if it's in that area, it's still got to be looked at on its own merits.
Even if it's in the overlay district?
Yeah.
Yeah, whoever, whichever board has authority over it to look at the project has to do the full-blown SECR and look at it in terms of compliance with all the laws that we have on the books, environmental and otherwise zoning, et cetera.
So it'd be if, for instance, if this overlay zone was created as proposed and the planning board ultimately had the review of these applications as they came in, we would look at it just like we looked at prior, the Hill property and any of the other properties that come in front of us and say, you know, this might be a bit too much. This needs to be looked at differently, you know, we're concerned about this. Would any of that really change outside of us? And again, it's just my looking at the code. Outside of the ability to possibly be able to do different things if we wanted to be flexible. And that's a big if. And Aaron, I do agree with you on the property in question being very significant. It's as you drive into town, and, you know, when we did the site walk, I think we had every, a member of every board out there. And obviously, after walking it, you could see why it's so sensitive. But I think even if that property was in this district, I don't, as just one member, I don't think we handle that any differently than if it wasn't and it came in and had, you know, a proposal. You know, is that always that, you know, the, it's a bit overdeveloped, there's too much going on? I think we look at that as each application comes in on its own merits. Because there's probably going to be areas where we think there should be flexibility, and there's probably going to be other parcels where we don't. And what my concern is, that when this, if and when this overlay code gets passed, that ultimately, we have the ability, and when I say "us", the future members of this board, whoever they may be, have the ability to look at that and, you know, and basically just have the board set the limits and give us the authority to review the project. That was my thought.
I hear what you're saying, and far from me to say, I want this project property, the Soundview property to stay as it is, because I don't want to see that either. So I'm thinking very hard about what you're suggesting, you know, that the planning boards or planning boards of the future, whoever they may be, you know, get to deal with this property under the flexibility standards, which doesn't mean it's going to go up to the maximum, right? It's going to mean that each thing's going to be considered on its own.
You know, the one thing, Rich, I think my biggest concern is that people get the sense that this idea of the overlay district is that these projects would get some sort of special consideration. I don't think, and I think that's why it should be with our board, is because that's not what we do, right? We look at every project on its own merits. We look at the impact to the surrounding areas. We look at the demands on the resources, everything that goes with it. So this just means that there is the capability to be flexible in terms of some of the things. Like, we've talked about parking. I mean, there's so, you know, so many empty parking spots. Granted, there are some empty stores, but so many empty, or too many parking spots seemingly at certain points. And can there be some flexibility around those types of things? Pedestrian walking and other things that really need consideration. So I think my point is, I just would want people to know that whether it's within an overlay district or not, every project has got to stand on its own merits and be seen for what it's capable of being.
And I agree with that, and I'm very much upon a separation. You know, everybody's got their role to play. Listen, even with the boards that we deal with, the Tree Board, we refer off to them for trees. That's their expertise. That's what they know. The Abaca or the ARB, their aesthetics, their landscape architect. We could have some ideas, but we pass it off to them and we listen to their feedback, just like conservation or any other, you know, the Fire Commission. They look at certain things. I would say this with all due respect to supervisor and the town board. I think they set the area. They say, "This is where we think", because obviously, that's what they do. "This should be the area that needs to be looked at." And planning board, other boards, you're the ones that are going to make the decisions ultimately on the development. You know, we can't rezone property. We can make comments on rezoning property, but that's up to the board. And, you know, I have a very strong opinion that if they deem a certain area should be looked at, I have no problem with that, as long as then the review of that get passed on to others. So there's not, you know, they're not looking at everything. And I think if you have that separation, then there's control over it. You know, then I think that when it gets to John Taggart and Robin and they get to look at the planning end of it, and I think it just, I'd say we follow that course. That's just my one opinion.
Can I add in just one thing, just really a clarification point, to really background information? Is that the Hill property and the Soundview property are similar in nature in kind of where they lie relative to the commercial areas and so forth. And so they were looked at with some commonality, and they were both put in, and I'm not saying they were put in together, but the discussion was that with that commonality, they should, if one is in, the other should be in because they have that similarity to of one another. So just wanted to lay that out there for you.
It makes sense.
I'm reconsidering in light of our discussion, you know. Again, I wanted the Hill property in from the beginning, and so why can I, why should I say, "No, not the Soundview property"? And, Rob, I'm listening to what you're saying, and it makes sense to go forward. So I will support the, you know, the memo as written.
Yeah, I think, I think Rob made some good points there, and sort of changed my mind, too.
Aaron, you did mention one other, there were three.
The third point was about the scope of review that goes into this. And it's always, you know, the question of, do you do a rezoning without knowing what the specifics are going to be? And then you deal with them later, which seems to be where we are. Do you think the environmental review on this legislation is sufficient to support it?
Well, it's going to be tricky to, to be candid. The environmental review is not going to be something you can rubber-stamp. And one of the problems with doing an environmental review on an overlay district is you don't... is you don't know how it's gonna apply to the various property. I think what you can do is look at the area overall and see whether or not there are candidates for an overlay district like this. I think one point I would like to make is the overlay district does not become a right. If the board approves it, if the town board approves it, it's an option. And it's an option that the planning board, or whoever the reviewing agency is, can decide to implement, or can decide it's not appropriate. And so it's just another tool that you use. And so, anyway, getting back to the environmental review, uh, it can't be cursory. It's, it's gotta be at least have some parameters of what can be done within the district, and how that will change if the overlay district is, uh, is approved. But I don't think you have to get into the weeds for uh, each of the individual properties and see how it's gonna affect them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move forward with the memo to the board?
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Robin's not gonna let me forget, we have to talk about, uh, Balmy's site visit, when we wanna set that up.
Site visit? To where?
Alex Mill Road.
This is Burns, the engineer.
Right, it was a two, it's a two-lot subdivision on Halex Mill Road, and you guys went out there once already. Um, the engineer wanted to meet with you.
Oh, yeah, that's the one on the curve.
Right, with Dave and with whoever else.
I, I, I just thought it was very dangerous. But he wants, he wa, Aaron, he wants to meet us out there again, or meet with us this time.
Was I on that one? Did I, did I?
I don't think so.
No, okay. I don't remember.
It's, it's a quick visit. It's, uh, you know, you, just gotta watch where you park out there. Um, so, any thoughts on when to set that up?
When we do it, the, on a weekday or weekend?
Um, well, maybe a weekday's not a bad idea. I'm starting to get busy on the weekends now. Going into the crazy season. Any thoughts of which day would be better?
No.
It gets more about time.
Float a few dates out during the week, via email?
Sure, I just, it's more about the time of day.
Yeah.
You know.
Should we go out the first thing in the morning?
You might get hurt. I know.
They won't go out during rush hour.
Dan, if, if, not, Dan, I can decide, Dan, you, have you seen this application? Um, no, the, I, this one hasn't come across my desk yet. All right, it's an older one. I think we went out there, John, what would you say, wintertime, probably to look at the site?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I think everybody there was like, oh, you know, that to pull out where they were discussing just didn't seem at all safe. Maybe you could take a look at it before we even go out there?
Sure.
All right, and then we'll float some dates out. I did just get a text from Nancy. She said the meeting's not going long enough. We've got at least another hour and a half to go before we hit eleven.
Like nine thirty, wow.
Huh?
Mine's a-
Quite a quick one. Right.
Okay.
I think we're all set. But a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night.